Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Could you do me a favor and call the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Shaqie?
Yes.
Mr. Holden?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Gill?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
Ms. Scamro.
Yes. This meeting will be recorded and may be televised live. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Mr. Perrin, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If there are no objections, we'll take some of the -- we're going to go down to the very bottom where it says the listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated because the first item this evening I did not anticipate. And if you will bear with me, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our last meeting, we had the honor of and the privilege of handing out medals to our students in grades three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, and 10th grade for perfect MCAS scores. It's one of our highlighted meetings of the year, and we enjoy recognizing. Unfortunately, at that meeting, one of our students was unable to attend, and we would like to take the opportunity tonight, if we may, to recognize this student who, in grade four, had a perfect math score of 280 on the MCAS Math exam. And that is our good friend, Daniel Tracy. Hand you the certificate, and why don't you go right down the line and shake hands with the school committee?
Congratulations.
Thank you for a day without a Tracy.
Congratulations, good work.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Tracy is following in the footsteps of his older siblings, and we applaud all the work he has done, and we're very proud of him. So, we thank him for coming in tonight, and he is accompanied with his mom and dad.
Yes.
Thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And again, if you -- if there are no objections from the rest of the members, a couple of other things that are down under new business, which would be later this evening, if we could take them now, because some of the people who would like to speak are here now. And perhaps we could start with the Wentworth High School Cheerleaders? Do you want to?
She could come up here and sit here, that way her voice can be heard on the line.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I'm here tonight to present or propose a second trip to the National Cheerleading Championship.
Could you tell us your name first?
Oh, Rachel Mastoni. I am the head coach and coordinator of the High School Varsity Cheerleading Program.
Thank you.
Over here is my assistant coach, Stephanie Bono. Wouldn't be possible without her, so. So, this year, we would like to attend a national championship in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. This is after getting another national bid at the state championship this year on November 26 over at Lowell High School. We needed to get a score of a 160, and we did a 160.75. So, this year, we had made it very clear that if we were going to attend again, that we wanted to set a certain goal to achieve so that we weren't just going every year, and they, you know, we wanted to teach them that they had to achieve something new every year. But this year, for the first time, we became the Northeast Conference Cheerleading Champions, which was very exciting. It's the first time in the history of the program, so we were very proud of that. And so, we kind of said that it would be okay to propose another trip to nationals with your approval.
And could you give us a little bit of detail about this trip? How long it would be?
Sure.
How many girls would be going?
So, we --
Chaperones?
Yeah, we have 18 girls potential. This hasn't been brought to them yet, so it will depend on how many are able to go, of course. We competed 12 in 15, so we would probably go back to that 15 number and compete 15 and take three alternates with us, which is what we did last year as well. At this time, we have three chaperones, myself, my assistant coach Stephanie, and Eileen Bellisstock, the principal of the high school, who came with us last year, and thank God because she's amazing. It will be from Friday, March 20 to Sunday, March 22. We leave on Friday at 5:00 a.m., and we return home on Sunday night, oh, we leave South Carolina at 10:15 on Sunday night. It'll be two guaranteed days of competitions, Saturday and Sunday. Friday is like the opening pep rally and all of the registration and getting settled, and then the practice and warm-up time would be on Friday. And then there would be a competition on Saturday and Sunday as well. So.
Theoretically, you only miss one day of school.
One day of school, whereas last year, we missed two.
Even though you'd be getting home late on Sunday?
Right, right. We wanted to make sure we got home before Monday because that week is MCAS that starts on Tuesday.
Anybody have questions?
I'm sorry, just so that you're aware, that and the MCAS affects six students out of that 18.
Right.
Possible, there's three freshmen and three sophomores. But that was the -- my belief was that if they were going to be home on Monday, I would prefer them being here Monday to get well acquainted, back into it, as opposed to coming home Monday, and then those kids have to take a test on Tuesday.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you very much, Ms. Mastoni, for and -- I'm sorry, I forget your last name.
Oh, no.
For the wonderful work that you've done with the young ladies. I know that you're very special to them, and I think that makes them want to even do more because, you know, you have given, both of you have given so much to our kids, our young ladies, and I just want to thank you. And also, to give up your time for this is also a great honor to you, both of you, and to the students that participate, and I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your recognition.
Any other questions or comments?
I just second that. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you're doing, best wishes.
Thank you.
For going with the trophy.
Thank you. Fingers crossed.
We haven't approved the trip yet.
One final comment, just so everybody's aware, at the next meeting, we have invited the cheerleaders and the football team because they were the Northeast Conference Champions to be recognized publicly.
Great. Okay. Yes vote will be to approve the overnight trip to South Carolina for the cheerleading, and a no vote will be to not approve it. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Are you ready?
Yes.
Again, if you will allow me to take out of order, we have our two teachers from the Interhigh School Life Skills class, Ms. Penvenura and Ms. Boyagian, affectionately known as the Double Bs. And they have come this evening to ask for another trip.
So, we did this trip last year. We traveled to Wolfborough, New Hampshire, and this year, our dates that we have are Monday, June 15, Tuesday, June 16, and Wednesday, June 17. And these are actually the last three days of school, of high school, and there are no snow days. So, we would like to take our -- we would like to take our 11 students up to Wolfborough for a recreational vocational experience. We're also inviting our senior peer mentors, who at that point will be done with high school, so it won't interrupt their school, their school experience because they will have already finished. And we will have nine adults traveling with us up to camp. We're going to do a very similar schedule to what we did last year, some vocational experiences like gardening, baking, painting. They even got to drive some golf carts around. And then at night, we have a campfire. We did a talent show that lasted for about three hours last summer. We watched a movie in the lodge, and it was just, it was a fantastic experience, and we would love that, to have an opportunity to do it again with our new students that we have.
Questions?
Just on transportation, I know in the past, we've talked about staff members, you know, taking their own vehicles up with students. Is that open? Those logistics worked out?
Last year, we --
Well, in the past, we've talked about people going up, whether it was your trip or the other Life Skills trips up to New Hampshire and Maine.
I don't know about other --
The Saco trip.
I don't know about their trips, but our trips we, that we took last year, we got a bus. There was a very generous company that gave it to us for $400 to --
So, wasn't the vans, the school vans?
I just had a question on the number, number of students. You said you had nine chaperones. I used to know.
Yes.
Eleven students?
We have, yes. Well, the peer mentors that we invite, we have about 30 senior peer mentors. Not all of them can attend. Last year, we had about half actually attend, but we invite --
Which is a great, great ratio, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Holden?
When you go up there, are there other schools and other Life Skills classes up there, or is it just you guys?
It's just us.
Oh, that's really nice.
Mm-hmm. There's other staff who are there getting the camp ready for the summer camp that they have there, but it's just us.
Okay.
If you have not had a chance to see the camp, it's right in Wolfborough. It's absolutely beautiful camp. My wife and I toured it the week before they went up last year, and we knew from just seeing it, the kids would have a great time. So, I would totally endorse this again because they ran a great program last year, safe. Everybody came back thrilled and loved it, so.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
As with all the Life Skills programs, I'm sure it will be a howling success, and very well worth it. Those kids are tremendous. As are their teachers, by the way.
Not just talking about the camp, but to give them our Double Bs, a wonderful feast that they gave, that the children and they put on. It was wonderful, great food. It was wonderful seeing the children there, and they were enjoying themselves, and staff enjoyed themselves, too. So, I just wanted to say thank you. Great, great, great job. Thank you.
And if the answer is not, we're voting. Yes will be to approve the trip. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's it for our delegates and visitors this evening, Mr. Superintendent?
That is it, as I know. Yes, the other stuff we can handle when you get down to it.
Any public comment this evening? Mr. Mail, Councilor Mail?
First of all, I wanted to thank and wish you all a happy holiday.
Thank you, you too.
Two, something I've said before, and I'd love to be able to say again, we have a dilemma on Monday nights of important meetings that all get jammed up, and I know you guys have this and somebody else has that, but we've got to find a way of clearing the backlog because I know you have some stuff, and I can't stay because planning board has other stuff. A couple of weeks ago, I was in here, and your, I think it was the night your super, your principal was in here, Brian, I think is the name is.
Brian.
Brian, Brian, and he talked about the Chromebook cards, and I was very, very moved by that, and I went back to the council the next night and made a recommendation on free cash that we should fund those, and I think the next meeting up, bingo, that happened. I'm very thankful, I'm glad you got the cards, and what I think it does is it solidifies the fact that we're one town, maybe two committees, but we're one town. I know not everybody thinks we do a lot of stuff, but I was reading a book the other day about exceptionalism, and they brought up a subject of KIPP schools, which I know are a charter school. And I know that we don't have charter school capability in the town, but what we do have the capability of doing, because you've done it in other areas, and you're certainly going to do it with your electronic initiative, is to take elements from each of those programs and bring them in to the, into the, into the school. So, if they have a particularly good approach to math education, to science education, reading, literacy, I don't see why you guys couldn't propose that. And if it was sound and reasonable, I would be willing, again, as I've mentioned to you many times, to sponsor that back at the council. I know it's not in your budget right now, but elements like that, when we do have, you know, some, you know, leeway in terms of free cash, we could certainly put that way, and I think it's very acceptable, because I don't think anybody balked. As a matter of fact, I think the, I think the Chromebooks went through without going to committee. So, there's no reason to think that some other good initiatives that were educationally focused, that had good, clear thought, wouldn't be able to get, you know, passed by. There's people that care about education on the council, and there's people that care about education in the town, and I really think it would be a great idea. You know, and I was impressed with what I, when I went onto the KIPP website, the same way I did when I came a couple of weeks ago and talked about Khan Academy. I think you have, what, maybe 90 kids in Khan Academy. I think we'll see those types of things, and I think those are the types of programming that people outside the district say, wow, you got fish, you got fish, you got this. And I saw, I think I was driving by the school the other day, and we had a parent math program. Again, I know those things are hard to fund inside the system, but outside the system, I don't want to say they're inexpensive, but they're secondary items that we could put in, and if they worked, then maybe we find a way to get it into the budget, but as opposed to trying to grab it out of your stuff. So, I wanted to offer that on my part, but more importantly, geez, we've got to find a way to kill this Monday meeting, you know, the commemoration and stuff, so I just want to say that. I begin a happy holiday, students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mail. Anybody else? Next, we have minutes from November 17, school committee meeting for approval. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Perrin.
Actually, I'd like to make a motion to put the ball together, can't we?
Some people were at the first and not at the second, so it would limit who could run the first. So, there's a motion to approve the minutes of November 17.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Abstaining.
Mr. Holden is abstaining. Ms. Haynes? Thank you. Next is the, the minutes from November 18, which was a joint meeting with the school committee and the town council.
Motion.
Motion by President Gill. I'll second that motion.
Aye.
Any discussion on those? All in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Ms. Sullivan and Mr. Holden abstain. Thank you. Next are subcommittee reports.
Which one's first?
Which would you like to do first, Ms. Shaqie?
I'll do the curriculum one.
Okay.
All right, we had a curriculum, a subcommittee meeting on November 18 at 9:30 at the superintendent's office. The school committee members attending were Dawn Sullivan and myself. Public attendance was Mr. Macero and Gary Scamro. The agenda, the agenda included the Olveus bullying program that we discussed that what was, that was supposed to begin this school year. We discussed the baseline, and the superintendent said that December 12 during our professional development, that it will be discussed and that the program will begin after the new year. We also discussed that besides bullying, that we also needed to include dating.
Ms. Shaqie, I'm so very sorry. President Gill is being called away to another meeting.
Okay.
Would it be okay with you if we voted on the warrant at this time so he could participate in that?
Oh, sure, sure. Absolutely.
I'm very sorry. If there are no objections, I'd like to take out of order the warrant so that President Gill could, could be here to die. And that is warrant number SVW-15-9 in the amount of $130,117.08. Are there any comments, questions, discussions about the warrant? If not, we will vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you, President Gill, I appreciate it.
Okay. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Gunny.
Thank you, sir. Hopefully, we'll see you on the 22nd at the next school committee meeting, but.
Well, come on. You never know what's going to happen between now and then.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, Mrs. Shaqie.
No.
If you would.
We also talked and discussed about dating violence. One and one does go together with bullying and dating violence, but I think we were talking about what we've seen recently in our professional sports, about the violence against women, and it can be violence against men also, and that that should be incorporated in the program that we are offering our kids at the high school this year on the Olveus program. The coaches also, we talked about the coaches needing to address these issues of bullying and dating violence with their students and their teams, and hopefully, we can get some support if they would like to with our adjustment counselors on this particular issue. In the meantime, all schools can continuously campaign against bullying, whether it's active or not, there needs to be awareness, whether it's through posters, or we do some campaigning against bullying. The One Step Bullying Program is instituted within the Cummings School and the Gorman School. Mr. Harity initiated a weekly campaign in October, which is Anti-Bullying Month. Mrs. Pearson also brings the program into her classrooms. The goal of both programs is to emphasize the importance of showing respect to all people. We also spoke about the continuance of using the programs throughout the school year. The next on the agenda was Curriculum Coordinator/ Director Frank Woods, which is our new curriculum coordinator, will be coming on board January 26. He is already participating in the leadership meetings. Frank's will be addressing some current issues regarding bullying, civil rights, and the PQA audit, and that's involving our special needs students. So, Frank will be heavily involved in that audit. The publishing company of Go Math has donated 100 free texts to the sixth and seventh grades. We will be using this program for one more year while investigating new programs if needed. We did not discuss the use of MCAS versus PARC, or the discussion on implementing strategies for the MCAS, mostly because the principals didn't receive the email. It was double posted on one, so that's why our principals and our adjustment counselors missed that meeting. They're usually high attendance to this, so I appreciate all that they do do, and there were no votes taken. The next committee meeting was the Finance, which was, again, on 11/18 at 8:30 at the superintendent's office. The school committee attending was Dawn Sullivan and myself. Public attendance was Gary Scamro, John Macero, and Susan Echols. The first thing on the agenda was the school budget where we are right now. Ms. Echols and Mr. Macero said the substitute line is staying on target. We also discussed about meetings with the town council and school committee, finance committees. The discussion was supposed to go around the basis and understanding of Chapter 70 money, bring in the new potential consultant or DESE rep to explain the formula of the Chapter 70. Right now, we have not heard from the council about meeting together. We also discussed the difficulty in recruiting teacher candidates. Some of this due to the fact that our salaries are low. We also had a discussion of free cash amount announced by the town manager and CEO. This year, it amounted to $2.2 million, which is kudos to the town council, the town manager, and the CEO. In combination, though, it's in the last two years with this money, there has been a total of $4.5 million. The school finance person, the chosen candidate, has not committed to the part-time position, but would like to come on as a consultant. There's a question as to will we continue to search for that part-time person, or possibly retain the person as a consultant for the rest of the school year. Mr. Macero talked about the new BRAME, which is a new student information format. We also talked about discussion regarding the start of negotiations. The superintendent has been in contact with reunion, not the reunion, but the union, in regards to startup dates. There was additional discussion involving the cost of playground and tennis court repairs and maintenance. There was discussion about the students and the public making use of the facilities. Mr. Macero, did you want to speak on that a little bit about?
What I've been told, I did ask the town council president, because the other day in the newspaper, they, they approved certain items for the capital improvement, and I did not see the playgrounds on that, but he thought that they were approved.
Okay.
The playgrounds for the rubberizing, both the Cummings and the Fort. He did not recall the tennis courts at all.
Okay.
So, I'll have to check that just to double, you know, to double confirm it, but that would be great news under the capital improvement.
That would be nice, that would be good. There were no votes taken. Finally, there was a meeting on December 1 at 1:00, the superintendent's evaluation subcommittee, subcommittee meeting. I just wanted to remind the audience that the superintendent agreed to open the contract, his contract, for the sole purpose of a new evaluation process. In attendance were Mr. Macero, and the school committee was Gary Scamro and myself. The agenda purely was the superintendent's evaluation, new evaluation. We had a discussion, discussion on using the DESE format for evaluating the superintendent. We had a discussion also on what that format would look like. In considering this, the superintendent created his goals that will be used for his evaluation. His goals must be voted on by the school committee, and I think I need to maybe clarify that within the DESE's evaluation, there are three categories that are looked upon for goals, and what the superintendent needed to do was to create three, a minimum of two to three goals per category, and the goals needed to be able to be evaluated with evidence backing it. The superintendent did give us a list of his goals for our school system back in, I think it was late September or early October, and those goals are still standing, but as far as his evaluation is concerned, we will only be evaluating on the goals that he presents, but we also must vote tonight to accept the goals that the superintendent will be presenting later on in the school committee meeting. So, I just wanted to make that clear for everyone. A vote was taken on the motion to accept a change in the superintendent's evaluation process to align with the DESE's evaluation of the superintendent. The vote was two to nothing in favor of changing this format, with the understanding that the school committee needs to vote on the superintendent's goals. There was further discussion on eliminating the incentive pay for the superintendent within the contract. A vote was taken on the motion, two to nothing, in favor of eliminating the superintendent's incentive pay. This was, there, those were two votes that were taken during that subcommittee meeting, and that's it.
Mr. Perrin? What happens with that incentive pay?
The, the reason, Mr. Macero was pretty strong in believing that that $10,000, that would be the maximum amount of incentive pay that the superintendent would receive if he accomplished a complete evaluation with 80% in every category. He would, in that discussion, Mr. Macero had said to us that he feels that the salary that he has within his contract and has bargained for is the, is the amount of money that he should receive. So, it wasn't, I just wanted everyone to know, it didn't come from us as a school committee saying we don't want to give saying, "We don't want to give that incentive pay." That came from the superintendent saying he would like to just do what his job is to do to the best of his ability and not be tagging incentive pay on top of that.
So we're eliminating, I need to cut you off, but we're eliminating the incentive pay.
Yes.
So if you hit a benchmark that we had set before, you're not going to get additional funds.
Right.
Correct. Correct.
If the school, if this committee tonight votes to approve the subcommittee recommendation, that is correct.
It's a pretty generous offer.
Yeah.
Well, if I may.
Please.
Because I spoke at it the other night. I think that when we spoke about this about two months ago, I think Mr. Holden brought up a very good point on it, that we expect our superintendent to do, you know, what we're expecting to do, especially somebody that's been here a few years now. My, I want to be evaluated on what you folks approve and evaluate me on my strengths, my weaknesses, let me know just as the teachers are and as my principals are. I don't want to be rewarded for something that the elementary school may have achieved that got to that level, but yet I get the reward or the incentive on that pay. I don't feel that that, to me, is something that is in fairness to the school. We evaluate our teachers, we evaluate our administrators, you're going to evaluate me, and I feel that the salary is the salary. I should be doing my job. If I'm not doing that job, then you have the right to change that, you know? But that was just my philosophy on it. I also felt that it got very confusing at times when we were looking at certain points about what was going to be here and how's this going to be. And because of that confusion at the last, last year, quite frankly, it was, you know, I mean, you looked at it and you said, "Okay, I've earned that." But I looked at it and said, "Jeez, I walked away with $2,400," which is wonderful to take that and say, "I've earned that," but I didn't earn any of the others. So it's also a point where you say, "Well, wait a minute. What's, what's, what is, what are we supposed to do?" So I felt, "Let's take that out and let's just evaluate me on the same system that everybody else has."
The only thing I, Mr. Mosero, I don't know whether you're going to make reference to the superintendent's rubric that we have in our packet.
I, we-
Were you intending to do that?
I was not, my intention tonight was to just go through the goals.
Just present your goals.
Just to present the goals, if that was okay.
Okay.
Because I wanted to see where everybody, if they voted for it and how that was going to work on it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess I'm just asking for some guidance here. During our meeting, the superintendent's meeting, we did present the evaluation format that we will be using if it's voted upon today.
Mm-hmm.
I guess my question is, will we have time for our members to look at this evaluation process? Will we call a special meeting, or can we, what do we need to do in order for our members to be exposed to this new format and be able to use it?
Which is this rubric.
That's correct.
That's the rubric.
They all have it.
That's the rubric, but this is the act, do they, do you also have, I didn't see that in my packet.
We don't have the rubric, just the goals.
The rubric is, you can download the rubric. We put it in the-
The rubric is there, and you also have the goals too, right? No?
Yes, they should.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't see that in my packet. That's why I was saying that.
The rubric has been, it's been downloaded into the-
I have that.
Cloud.
In the app.
Dropbox.
Okay, I, okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure that everybody sees it. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Should we table it until we've all had a chance to read it, or?
We haven't had a chance to read it. We table, well, I think there are-
Two different votes.
Three votes.
Three votes.
There's the vote on the superintendent's goals, as he's presented them. There's the vote to remove the incentive pay, and there's the vote to-
Accept the evaluation.
Accept the evaluation.
The new evaluation.
The new evaluation criteria. We'll take them one at a time. If anybody has reservations about any of them, then we can discuss it at that time. Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Those votes will come later this evening. You're all finished now, Mrs. Sharkey?
Yes, sir, yes, thank you.
Mrs. Sharkey, I have said this before, I will say it again, and I'm going to say it again tonight. I cannot thank you enough for all the work you do for this committee.
Thank you.
The superintendent's evaluation in particular, wading through all of the state requirements, the evaluation process, you have put in a lot of work. And I just thank you so much for all of the work that you do.
Thank you.
For this committee and for this town, through this committee.
Thank you.
Buildings and grounds. Ms. Sullivan, did you have that meeting today?
Yes, we had a Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee this evening at 5:30. In attendance were Mr. Perrin, myself, Mary Ella Sharkey, and Superintendent Mosero. We looked at the last few weeks of reports from the building principals at some of the building concerns, and the top ones seem to be some phones that either weren't present in classrooms or weren't working in classrooms, and IT has been notified and that is being resolved this week. The phones for the new classrooms, you'll be glad to hear, were paid out of swing space money, so that was probably helped with our budget. There's also been reports of the Fort Bank School and the Cummings School of leaky roofs and walls during some of the storms. Multiple companies have been out to try to track the problem. It's been ongoing, and it usually happens when there's driving rain, which we may get again this week. There has not been a resolution. I'm not sure what the resolution will be, but we can speak to that more. Another issue that came up was the playground, the rubber surface that was put in at the Gorman Fort Bank School, I believe in the spring of 2012. Some of the rubber is cracking. I know that Paul O'Donnell from the DPW has been contacting the vendor who laid the surface to check out the warranty and what repairs or rework can be done. So I don't have an update on that from Mr. O'Donnell, but I know that he's working on it. And I did speak to Sean Driscoll, the Parks and Rec Director, and the playgrounds will be part of the safety inspection that the town playgrounds will have after the beginning of the year. So we're now in the, the school playgrounds will now be part of the townwide safety inspection that occurs annually by a certified playground safety inspector. And that should happen after the beginning of the year, from what I understand. Overall, the building maintenance issues have been pretty good. There was a burst pipe this morning, unfortunately, at the Gorman Fort Bank School, which affected the kitchen area, the cafeteria area, and Mr. Mosero, I think, is also going to report on that, what's been taken care of and what's going to happen this week for that. And that's all.
Any questions for Ms. Sullivan? Mr. Perrin?
Not so much a question, but more of a statement. We're, we're talking about that rubber ground around the playground equipment. I know that we asked Paul O'Donnell to reach out to them, but I'd like to see a letter go out so if there is a warranty period, we're not, we're not, you know, going on vacation over Christmas and it gets lost in the shuffle and we lose the date. So if we could just make sure that a letter goes out to them, just letting them know that we notified you by phone on this date, and we're putting you on notice, you know, that, you know, we need someone out here to resolve this.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next is on the agenda is the Superintendent Contract Negotiation Subcommittee. And I'm requesting permission from this committee to set up that subcommittee. We don't currently have one. I spoke with the former chairperson of the school committee, Mary Wasborne, as to how they did the last contract, and she said just a few of them got together and did it. But I would like to make it more formal and have an actual named subcommittee for that. And the policy of the school committee is that I need to get the permission of the school committee to do that. So I would like to make a motion that we create a Superintendent Contract Negotiation Subcommittee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Perrin. Questions, discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, V and A's, thank you very much. And in case anybody doesn't know, the superintendent's contract that he's in right now will end at the end of June 2015. Thus, the need for discussion at this time. Next is the superintendent's report. If you wanted to go from that side into the personnel items, that would be great.
Great, thank you. I just want to piggyback on Ms. Sullivan's comments in regards today. We did have a pipe burst that was one of the coils up in the top of the roof unit that was above the kitchen. The, apparently, I actually climbed all the way up to the roof with a couple other folks to take a look at it, but the water was pouring out, and we had to shut the water off in that area. I did some good little damage to the inside of the ceiling tiles down by the cafeteria. We were able to get the water off, clean it up. However, right now, they were, when I last left them at 4 o'clock, they were still trying to figure out how they were going to replace that unit and whether or not Huntington Controls could do it or not. I have not gotten a word back yet from Mr. Safuni. If not, we would be able, we would, we've already reached out to the actual contractor of that unit itself, and we know that they could come in if we, if we need to. The coil itself was repaired, but it was welded back by the plumber that we had out there this morning. But we just want to make sure that we're in good shape on that. It did cause us, in the cafeteria, to have to have the heat off in that particular area. So we have created a backup plan for that tomorrow and the next couple of days, where we will bring in the portable heat that Mr. Safuni has brought in that we had at one time up at the high school to kind of take care of that issue while we're resolving the other unit.
Did it affect serving meals to the students?
It did not. We were very fortunate. I have to give a lot of accolades to the CAF staff who made sure that, I mean, where it affected it was, we lost one of the areas where the kids would go in, because that part, when you first walked in, was in the wet spot area. But, you know, kudos to the CAF workers and Ms. Pearson, Ms. Grimes, and the cafeteria workers today, lunch ladies, put together a good, strong program so that the kids could get in and out. My concern, of course, was two things today, was the water. If we had to shut off the water for the building, we would have had to have sent the kids home at that point. And then, of course, the heat, and today was the coldest day we've had thus far. Now, over the next couple of days, we're looking to have a warmer weather, but a deluge of rain. So we will, you know, we'll play it day by day to see where we add on. But that was the issue there today. In regards to the other, couple of the other items on that, we will get those phones in that we've been working on, and we have done a lot of work on, that driving rain is what is the, what is the culprit at the William P. Gorman and at the Cummings School. I mean, we've done a lot of work in trying to find out, I mean, we've had, as you know, there's a company out there, Leaky, Leaky Roofs, they've come in and they've sprayed it and sprayed it and sprayed it. And here, again, you may not recognize anything or see anything for a couple of days, because it could be one drop that gets in from another part of the roof. And so it's been, it's been an endless game of trying to find out where the problem is. But we are, we are working on it. But we do know that it only happens during this type of nor'easter rain, and so we have to bear for it tomorrow. But we are working on that. In regards to the budget coming up, Ms. Echols and myself have put together, I put this in your folder so that you could see, we've put together a budget timeline. We've started meeting with the principals in regards to the 2016 fiscal budget. This Friday, we'll meet with the directors in regards to the budget. What we're, I'm asking for them to have their current proposals for their budgets for schools due on January 12th. To me, we will review the fiscal '16 budgets on the Friday, the 16th, and the 23rd. January 30th, the final proposals are due. February 1st to the 9th, I would anticipate a budget subcommittee at that point. I would like to do a budget presentation to the school committee on the February 9th school committee. And then, I would anticipate from February 9th to March 9th, some more budget subcommittees, because we only have one scheduled at that time in February for school committee. And then in March, I would like to, if we've presented the budget to the school committee on the 9th, I would like to have March 9th be the public hearing, if possible. And then on the 23rd, the anticipated vote of the budget, because that will allow us, either the 9th you could vote or the 23rd, but it'll allow us to get the vote into the town council, to the town manager by April 1st. So I want to make sure that we're well aware, well ahead of that. If you need to schedule anything else or in that timeframe, if we do, if you want to have a budget subcommittees in January, we can certainly do that as well. But I just wanted everybody to see the timeframe and the timelines that we're working on. And so far, the Friday was very good, because one of the things that we are working on when we meet with the budget folks too, is we're meeting currently with how we're doing this year as well, to see what the areas, if there's any areas of concern.
Two questions. When is the date that the budget has to be submitted to the council?
Usually, it's April 1st, I believe, to the town manager. We submit our budget to the town manager, and then the town manager has to submit his budget by May 9th, I think, and then they have 45 days.
The chart has spelled out the time.
Well, here's my concern. How, I know next year's contract negotiations, which-
Right.
Certainly affect the budget.
That's correct.
Are we coinciding negotiations before we do the budget, or is it going to happen after? Just how was that being laid out?
It's the, it's the chicken before the, you know-
Yes.
And that is the issue, because we ran into that problem three years ago. I mean, we've, it's been very helpful for us when we're creating a budget to know what the percentage is, and we're good on that.
Yes.
So, you know, if we can, if we know some of that, I mean, we, we will do our best to anticipate what may or may, but then, you know, you run into where people say, "Oh, they're into," you know, and so we have to be very careful on that whole issue.
Fine, green, that's fine.
We will look at it in the, I mean, what I've done in the past, as we talked about it before, was we put it in contingency, we looked at other areas, we know what we, you know, what we're going to anticipate. But I would imagine that it would be great during this timeframe if we could start the negotiation process, you know, the better off we are, the better off it'll help us in getting that bottom line figured.
But it will be budgeted into the-
We will budget everything that we can accordingly, but those questions will come up, especially when we get to the FinCom and when we get to the town council, they're going to want to know, "Well, what's this?" Because they like to know every penny and where every penny is accounted for. And then when you say, "Well, this money's over here," they say, "Well, wait a minute, what was that going to?" You know, so it is a tricky, it's a tricky thing. But you know what? We're being very transparent on it. It is a negotiating year. We need to put money in the budget for that purpose. So we have discussed it. You had two, is that it? Was that the second? Were they both the second?
No, both was the deadline to the town, and then-
Okay, all right. I do want to commend Olivia Brandy Miller, who I know at the last meeting, we gave her an award, $280, as well as Grace Motridge, who are both in the Boston Ballet Nutcracker Show, Play, Ballet, thank you. My wife would yell at me for not calling it the ballet. But, so, you know, it's not only one, but two students from Winthrop to participate in that. That's excellent. You all attended the National Honor Society. I mean, some of you may have attended. We did have the National Honor Society of three weeks ago, and those folks were inducted. We're very proud of that. Winthrop High School academic team competed in the Super Sunday event of the WGBH's High School Quiz Bowl last Sunday at the WGBH studios. Representing Winthrop were Joey Bosco, James Forrester, Caitlin Egan, Devon Rockow, and alternates Elizabeth Carsley and Haley Holden. They performed well against 122 teams from all over the Commonwealth, scoring 700 points, 740 points out of a possible thousand in an effort to advance to the live studio taping in January. They will be announcing who advances pretty soon. I haven't heard yet on that, but it's a great job on that. And I don't know if we announced it the last time, but Coach Girls basketball coach Ignacio Oyola is receiving an award. He did receive the award at Holy Cross from the Massachusetts Basketball Coaches Association. They pick a coach from each division that exemplifies a quality program with success on the court and in the classroom. Congratulations to the coach and officer of the Winthrop Police Department. So even before the season began- of the Winthrop Police Department. So even before the season began, to have some recognition there. Odd Fellows and the Rebecca Organization, as you recall, they were here last year and they presented some gifts, are once again offering an all-expense-paid trip to New York City and the United Nations as part of their annual United Nations Pilgrimage for Youth Program. Students can download an application at unpilgrimage.org. So I would certainly tell students to make sure that they take full advantage of that. I would like to just announce our National Honor Society because these students deserve that recognition. Polly Benson, Brianna Bocchio, Matthew Bruno, Samantha Capone, Mackenzie Chudina, Daniel Delano, Thomas Di Benedetto, Tiana Di Benedetto, Margaret Dolan, Rebecca Evans, Matthew Feely, James III Forrester, Robert Giosa, Catherine Johnson, Emily Kilroy, Erin Lavagor, Christina Leone, Emily McGovern, Lillian McGrail, Victorian Scorsarella, Reese Teransky, and Kimberly West. These folks were the folks that were inducted this year along. We do have seniors that are in it for two years. So we're very pleased with that. Finally, on my superintendents, I did have goals that I wanted to present and I thought this might be a good opportunity, if that's all right, Mr. Chairman, to, since it is under the superintendent. I know that we haven't approved other areas, but I can just tell you that in, under the, under the Department of Education, there are three categories. There's the professional practice goals. There's the student learning goals and there's the district improvement goals. And what we like to do is a measurable goal, to try to have things in there by a certain time of when things should happen. And, and what will happen on this is, you will take a look, there's two, two areas of assessments that you have to do. One, you have to do a formative assessment. And so a formative assessment usually comes in around the sixth month. So we're kind of behind the times because it would be, we would, this normally would come to you in July and now in January, you would formally assess to say, if you've approved these goals, you would say, he's, he's meeting those, he's not there yet, or he's exceeded that. And then in the June, you would do a summative assessment that says, he completed this and this is why he did, or he needs some work on this and all of that stuff. So that, if you, if you approve the Department of Ed, that's basically, in a nutshell, how it works. Under the professional practice goals, I've asked that by March 2015, superintendent in conjunction with the police chief will establish a new safety communication system in place through radios, FOBS, and on the school, online school-wide crisis plans. Serve as a member of the superintendent's advisory committee to the Commissioner of Education and spread that information regularly to Winthrop District Administrators, as well as fellow superintendent colleagues of the North Shore Roundtable. And by 2015, with the help of MCAST, I mean, MASC and MASSS, which is the Massachusetts School Committees and Massachusetts Superintendents, superintendent will work with school committee to update individual policies when needed or required by district or level legislative mandates. One of the things that I've noticed in that, in our policy handbook, is that we do have a lot of policies that need to be updated already. And so one of those things is, I'd like to get those going and make sure that we're working alongside on that. Under student learning goals, I put in right now, by June 2015, superintendent will hold at least four unannounced and one announced visit per school for the purposes of walkthrough with building principals. Those are times when I would come into the school. We do a walkthrough of various classrooms. We sit down and we talk about what we've seen. And a lot of times, it's unannounced or announced. And majority are unannounced. I just come in and we see where they're at. It's part of the Department of Ed making sure that we both are in those classrooms. June of 2015, begin refining and vertically articulating to extend possible K through seven writing strategies with an emphasis on the three types of writing embedded in the Common Core State Standards. We've been working on that already with the Cummings and the Forts Banks. We're trying to make sure that we have a unilateral writing program that's going to work, that we can bring up. And then by January 2015, begin monitoring instructional initiatives and student performance outcomes by way of a quantitative and qualitative data collections. So that's creating assessments throughout the year, as we talked about before. District improvement goals, by January 2015, hire a district-wide director of curriculum and instructing director. You might say, well, geez, he's done that. And so is that in there? But I was working on these throughout the course of the year. I just want to let everybody know, this is something I'd be talking about in July.
They're all, they all look like ringettes, but you've had them in play for a while.
Yeah, come on now, now. They're not all...
No, but I mean that in a positive sense, you've had it for a while.
By June 2015, with assistant of five district coordinator to launch curriculum revision design following the Understanding by Design UBD platform in all content areas. We've started to do it in, just in the ELA and in math. But now we're working towards driving those areas in science, social studies, as well as other areas. Support and hire a part-time business manager or consultant to help with fiscal '16 budget process and help educate current staff regarding end-of-year and EPIM's reports and Chapter 70, net school funding. One of the things that Ms. Sharkey mentioned was, she called it Whole Brain. It's actually School Brain. It is a student information resource that we're going to change over. Like, right now, we use iPass. And the problem is, is that the state, with all of the mandates that the state is requiring and all of the areas that we need, the state is asking us to take a look at School Brain and everybody get onto the, utilize the School Brain, which means that everything that we plug in will automatically upload to every particular area so that we're not sitting there trying to pull in, okay, we put in the low income, but the low income doesn't connect over with this software and, and then we don't get points on that. So there's a lot of stuff that we're working on that. And we may actually, we will benefit on the cost of that because if multiple districts and towns and cities participate in that, the costs will go down. And then, of course, in the last area was the beginning in the fall of 2014, implement the Winthrop Public Schools Professional Growth and Evaluation System with 100% of educators and 100% of administrators. We were doing 100% of educators last year, but not 100% of administrators. But we only did, we, I should say, last year, we were doing about 75% of educators. So this year, we need to have it full-fledged right on there. And so on these goals, I also will have to submit evidence to you, to show you that I have been coming to those, if those are what's accepted. So I wanted to make sure that I gave that into that report.
Question. On the student learning goals, number three.
Yes.
I'm just inquiring, for his monitoring instructional initiatives and student performance outcomes, what have we been doing? I'm sure we've been monitoring them. So how's it going to change? And as far as using quantitative and qualitative data collections, is MCAST score something that we would use?
We would use that.
And we've been using them to...
Right. But what we're doing, we're also working on now, which is the Khan Academy, the 10-point, we're looking at various assessments that are, we're trying to put more assessments into the programs. And so we're doing pre and post so that we can take a look at the data so that we're, we know where we should be at the time for the MCAST. MCAST is what we've been utilizing as our data. But we'd like to create other data in there so that we can not just wait for that end of year so that we can see where we need to be. And if we, because at one of the meetings on that, you, you folks had stated that we'll keep coming back and telling us what that data looks like so that if we need more, we can push in more stuff for you with that.
And with regards to that, then, have you conference with staff? I know, I hear from, you know, teachers saying, there's too many assessments. All we're doing is teaching toward assessments and doing less teaching. And if we're planning to do more assessments, have we sat down with them and tried to put this all together? So they were fluid classroom and, you know?
We have worked. I've been working with the principals. The principals have been working with their teams in their class, you know, and their teachers to, to create the certain types of assessments that we're using. Like, at the elementary level, they're using the SRO, which is a reading assessment to see where students are at. And we're also working on, when they do the RTI, the response to intervention. So they're working on those assessments. We just want to make sure that we're able to follow the data so that even the teacher knows that it's a good tool to use, that they're seeing that they're at a point where, no, the child didn't understand it, or did the child understand it? So that's all. We're not trying to, we're not adding any more work for anybody on this. What we're trying to do is just assess what we're doing and making sure that it's working. And in order for you folks to see that it's working, I need to report something to you. So I wanted to make sure that we had some type of data on it.
I guess I'm just concerned, trying to think, what would we do for the last three, four years?
Well, we've been doing that. But, but I'm giving you goals. I'm just telling you that these are things that I'm working on. So, and we're going to use that data to improve upon that data. But you've seen, I mean, the, the point is, is you've seen the scores. And we want to improve on those scores. So now we want to show how we're going to show it by not just waiting on that area.
Are there any other questions for the superintendent on the goals?
Okay, on the personnel, couple of things here. Now, if I pull my slip away here. Okay, under appointments, we hired a teacher named Kelly Joy, who is going to be the new seventh grade math teacher. She's replacing Ms. O'Brien, who you all know last meeting. She's going to Australia. And we have Daniel Tillinghast, who's now the new Spanish teacher at the high school. He's all set on that. We have no resignations. We have one letter of retirement. I know that it's been posted in the, it's been out there, but this is an official letter to the retirement to the superintendent with Winthrop Public Schools. I will be retiring January 31st, 2015. I would also like to buy back my sick days. Sincerely, Peter Gobiel. Peter is the Director of Wellness, Transportation, and Athletics. I know that we have seen and we've heard that Peter was thinking about this. I don't know if you want to do something on the sick days before I talk about it, before I talk about Peter, or I can talk about Peter now?
Let's talk about Peter.
Okay. So I just wanted to, you know, Peter's been in the system for 34 years. He, I think the paper summed him up very well in describing him and his family and the work. I know that Peter is one of those types of individuals that seems to love to work, is constantly involved, constantly busy. He's a very involved person in the community. When I first walked into Winthrop, we were at a difficult time with the athletics. Peter was the right person at that right time to take over the athletics. I needed somebody who had an understanding of how Winthrop works, how the athletics work. And Peter has moved us, you know, moved us forward with all of the teams by also pushing, making sure that we brought in some new teams, as in girls volleyball, boys and girls lacrosse. Those have been additional items that he's added. He's a workhorse who cares very deeply about his students. He was a health teacher for many years. He started in the system as a science teacher. And I believe he was also one person who came in as a substitute teacher and then he got a call from the superintendent saying, would you like to go into this? About 34 years ago. I, it really has, I've, I've heard so long that he was going, he's told the world that he was going to leave us. And, but I didn't really let it sit in because I didn't really believe it, in all honesty. But today, I, I'm forced to believe it. I want to wish Peter Gobiel best of luck in any future endeavors that he does. I'm sure he's got lots of opportunities out there. He's very well-known in the gymnastics world. And I think that that's an area of passion for him. And I think he will do, be very successful in that. So I wanted to thank him for his commitment to Winthrop and his work ethic.
Make a motion to buy back sick time on Mr. Gobiel. Second by Mr. Perrin. Questions, discussions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions unanimous. Mrs. Sharkey?
Yes, I would just like to say a little something about Peter. As John has stated, Peter has been in our system for 34 years. And Peter has won, has worn a million hats. But every hat that he put on, he did the max work for whatever job he was asked to do. He never questioned his work. He never questioned what people asked of him. He just did his work and a lot of long work, long hours, long days. As John said, he always put children first. And I want to thank him sincerely for all of his work, all that he did for our school system and for the children of Winthrop. Thank you, Peter.
Some big shoes to fill, that's for sure.
Yep.
I'm a little surprised that you go on and on about how great Peter is. All you really needed to say was, he's from the point. And people would understand that he's a great guy.
Yeah, he went to the Hurdles Bridge.
He went to the Hurdles Bridge. He doesn't live at the point anymore, but he is still an official Quay Shirley kid. Thank you, Peter.
As far as leave of absence, I have none. Postings, we did post since the last seventh grade math, but we have filled it now. So that's all I have under personnel. I will, I'll update you next on, in regards at the next meeting, what we're going to be doing with the athletic director position. But I think tonight, it's more about honoring Peter as opposed to that.
Mr. Superintendent, I just wanted to ask, have we been able to fill Lundus' position, the special ed position?
We have an, we do have a, I know that they interviewed a candidate today that they felt strong on, that I think they were going to send down my way. So, and we did fill the position here.
Okay.
Oh, as a matter of fact, I'm sorry, I didn't even, I should have announced, Marie Hodgkins has officially accepted the position of the, you know, the...
Therapeutic alternative program.
Therapeutic classroom here at Winthrop High School.
That's great.
And she is just, I'm just so happy to have her come on board. We've been working and working and working for years. I guess our persistence paid off, so.
If I may say, I'm super happy to have Maria with us, Hodgkins with us. But I need to say thank you also to Lauren Senate and Rich Rosenberg, who are part of her program. We have worked, Maria has worked very hard. She came in first as a consultant in the, to the program. Maria comes with years and years of experience. And there isn't anybody better. And I also would like to thank her students because her students have also worked as hard to make this a positive program for the future of our school system. And I'm just thrilled that we have the program for our students and that we have a top-quality staff to work with these young men and women. And I, I'm just really happy, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Sharkey.
I'm also happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the payroll warrant. 領了October 22nd, 2014, amounts $601,025.51. Any questions, comments? Question by Vice Chairman Perrin.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sullivan. Questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions? I abstain. Did I say, I think I voted yes. I can't vote yes. I abstain. Thank you. Next is the budget transfer. We had in our package two pages of requests for budget transfers. I only have one question on it, which I spoke with Ms. Echols about earlier. And she explained to me what I didn't understand. So therefore, I will make a motion to approve the budget transfer request as made. Second by Mr. Perrin. Any questions on any of the items? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you. Next is the use of buildings and grounds. And I would like to make a motion that we approve the mast start in the Aristocats Model Airplane as one. Second. Second by Mr. Perrin. Any questions on those? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions? The third item, it's unanimous. The third item is the Gorman Ford Banks PTO Someone Special Dance. Now, you may recall that we have a policy in the school department that we allow for two dances at the eighth grade level, no more than that. And we do not allow for dances in younger grades. This is for the Gorman School. It is a younger grade. Therefore, it is technically a violation of the school committee policy to have this dance. I spoke with Christian Bonaparte about the dance. She's on the PTO. She is the person whose name is on the request. If you look at the request, it says that the expected attendance is 200 adults and 200 children. That was the tip-off for me. What, back in the... That was the tip-off for me, what, back in the old days, we might have called the father-daughter dance, but we're much more progressive than that here in Winthrop, and thus the name Someone Special. It is a request that a student can bring someone special to the dance, a mother, a father, a grandparent, whoever they would like to bring to that dance. And so, before we can approve this dance at the elementary school level, we need to set aside the policy that prohibits us from approving it, and that will require a three-quarter vote, so I would like to make a motion, I very much urge my colleagues to vote in favor of overriding our policy.
For this one event, correct?
Just this one event, the Gorman Fort Banks PTO Someone Special. First, we need to override the policy, so that we can take a vote on it, and then we'll take a vote on the, on the event itself. So I do make a motion that we override our policy, so that we may consider this particular item. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Sullivan. Are there any questions, comments? We will take a vote. If there's any question, then I'll, we'll take a voice vote, but if there's any question, I'll ask for a roll call. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, unanimous. Thank you. The next is to vote on the event itself, to approve the Someone Special Dance for Saturday 31st of January, for the Gorman Fort Banks PTO, and I would make a motion that we approve the Someone Special Dance.
Second.
Second by Mr. Karen. Any questions? We will vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous. Next, we get into the new business, and we go back to the superintendent's goals, which need to be voted on in order for this committee to accept them. Motion to accept the goals. Motion by Mr. Karen to accept the goals presented.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Sharkey. Any questions or comments, the superintendent, at this time on his goals? No, we will vote, a yes vote will be to accept them. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the goals are accepted. Mr. Superintendent, thank you. Next is a vote to remove, to remove the incentive pay from the superintendent's evaluation. It comes out of committee on a positive vote, and so we don't need a motion for that, and so I will ask if there are any questions or comments on removing the incentive pay from the superintendent's contract evaluation. We will vote, a yes vote will be to remove the incentive pay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Karen votes no. Abstentions? It's all yes, except for Mr. Karen. Next is the evaluation criteria, the rubric which we received. Do we wish to consider that tonight? Or do we wish to consider it on the 22nd, our next meeting?
I think we've gone over this with Marielle's last six, eight months, we listed this DESC. I think we know, and how to read it.
Okay.
Good to go. Let's put it to bed.
Okay. All right, any, I'll make a motion to approve the...
It's been...
I'm sorry.
Came out of committee.
Thank you, it came out of committee. Ms. Haynes, you were supposed to tell me that.
Sorry. Oh, God, we took that role away from me.
It came out of committee, approved, and so no motion is needed, and so we will be voting to accept the evaluation criteria as presented in our packet this week. Are there any questions or comments on it? It is the state superintendent evaluation. We will vote, a yes vote will be to approve the acceptance of this, the state's evaluation criteria. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous. Thank you. Mrs. Sharkey, your hand is up.
Yes, I just wanted, Mrs. Chairman, is to set a date when we should have these returned. If it is a mid-cycle, the mid-cycle actually ends the end of this month, realizing that everybody's just seeing it right now, I would like to maybe make it to the middle of January. When is our first meeting in January? Is it Janu, January 5th, is it? Or...
January 12th.
I was going to say it's the 12th.
January 12th.
12th.
12th and 26th.
All right, do we want to do it for the 12th, or would the committee rather have it on the...
When would you like us to have it?
I, the only reason I'm saying the 12th is because I will be here, I will not be here on the 26th.
January 12th.
Okay.
If that's what you would like.
And then, again, if anybody has any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer, you know, the filling out of the paperwork. I do have a hard copy, so if anyone would like to see, have a hard copy, so you can review it yourselves without, I'd be more than glad to give that.
Did you send it to us by email?
Sure.
Can we do that?
Sure, I think so.
That would be great.
Yeah.
It would be easier. We can scan it for you if you need to.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Sharkey. We've done the life skills overnight, next is the freshman class snowflake dance request, which we've got in our packet.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Karen for that. I will second the snowflake dance request. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Next is the freshman class biking car magnet fundraising request.
Motion.
Motion to approve that by Mr. Karen, I'll second that motion. Questions or comments on the magnet? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous. We did the cheerleading overnight request. The ICAD donation, do you want to talk about that, sir?
Sure, just so that everybody know, we, from the John Thompson, Thomas Special Friends Fund, there was a parent who worked with the Perkins Institute, is pleased to inform us that they donated an iPad Air as part of our iPads for Special Kids programs. So the Gorman Fort Banks received an iPad, the letter is here, and it was from April Wilmer and Sean Wilmer, the co-founders of the John Thomas and Special Friends Fund, which is a great opportunity. It was, this fund was founded in honor of their sweet little boy, John Thomas, and now they are a 501 nonprofit organization, they're committed to helping special-needs children in the community, as well as the medical, education, and social organizations that benefit and support them. So they donate all the time, and we did receive the iPad, but we want to make sure that it's approved before we can turn it over to the class.
Make a motion, I'll move that we approve accepting that donation. Second by Mr. Karen, any questions about it?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, unanimous. Thank you.
I would like to thank that family for doing that.
It's a great thing.
It's a great thing, you know, when people think beyond. Thank you.
Next is the first reading of the Community Use School Buildings and Grounds Policy. We have been, if I could explain, we have been adjusting our use of buildings request a piece at a time over the last months, and so, all I did was take all of it and...
Put it into a policy.
Put it into writing, take out that which shouldn't be in the policy anymore, because we have changed the policy, and put in what we have approved, just so the policy reads from start to finish, according to all of the votes that were taken on it. If you would like me to, to go through with the first reading and read the entire thing, I'd be more than happy to do that, or I would entertain a motion to waive the first reading.
Make a motion to waive the first reading? As much as I want to hear it.
I would request that we, that no one second it, so that I can spend the next half-hour reading it, if you would like.
I'll second it.
Oh, Mrs. Sharkey, this is such a disappointment to me. Very good. Any, any questions on waiving the first reading? We will vote on waiving the first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Public comment? Ms. Boyajian?
I just wanted to let everyone know that the life skills class was visiting the Book Depot, the Winthrop Book Depot, about a month ago, and there was a woman from the community who saw the children in there, and she called me and wanted to do something special for the kids, so tomorrow, she's treating the life skills class to Hong Kong Dragon for lunch.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Very nice.
That's excellent. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you to them. Fine woman. Thank you. That's great.
Public relations?
Yeah.
What are you raising your hand for?
For public relations. But it's real fast.
I don't believe it. I'm going to think about it, Mrs. Sharkey.
It's very, very quick.
The only one that I can trust you to be really quick.
Yeah, I know, I know, isn't that fresh? It's fresh, bold, bold. I just wanted to commend all of the actors and actresses, and Ms. Kalinda, and her staff on the wonderful play, It's a Wonderful Life, one of my favorite movies, and the students did a phenomenal job, as well as Karen and her staff, and I want to say thank you to them. Also, I did attend the International Night at the Cummings School, and again, Anita Preble put on another great, great show with the kids, well, not a show, but helping us to visit all different countries throughout the world. I did meet a new country with a new gentleman, a parent, from Tonga, T-O-N-G-A.
The Panyahas.
I said to the dad, where the heck is Tonga? And so, he showed me on the map, and it just happened that I just said to him, is that near Samoa? And he goes, yeah, he goes, I was born in Samoa, the, not me, but the gentleman, and I was just saying that when I was in my college days at Western Kentucky University, we had a whole throng of Samoan students that attended our university, and it was, they were just phenomenal young people, and they beat our pants off in volleyball every single time, and, but it was wonderful. He created three main dishes of Tonganese food for people to try, as well as so many of the other. Sam Young also did, what are they called, pot sticks? Pot sticks, Sam did a big thing, and just everyone did. It was, there must have been, I'm going to say, 18, maybe, different countries, and it was just fun, it was just fun, and I just want to thank her for always doing a great job.
Thank you, Mrs. Sharkey. Mr. Karen?
No, like Marielle said, Wonderful Life was incredible. Yeah, it was sad, but great, I mean, and she pulled it off, you know, without seeing changes, I said, is she going to pull this off? And my God, she pulled it off, and it was just, it was moving, it was truly moving.
Yeah.
And as far as Mr. Gobiel, I'm going to reserve, we didn't know if he was going to retire, when he was going to retire, so I'll wait till next meeting to have something ready for Pete.
Ms. Sullivan?
Anything to add?
Thank you. Anybody?
Good.
I'll ask, I'll ask after, it's not appropriate.
Marielle said something else.
No, it's just not appropriate, I just don't know when to ask it.
Well, you can, you can hold off, you can hold off if you wish.
Okay, I'll hold off.
Okay.
All right. It's about policy, it's about policy.
It's about policy. Does it pertain to something on the agenda this evening?
Um, no.
Okay.
For future policy, and I just need to...
Okay. Do you want to talk to them? Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Sharkey, second by Ms. Sullivan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous, we're adjourned.